Good morning.
Morning. Hi, Tom.
How you doing, John?
Good. Thanks for coming.
Sure. I'm gonna stop my video, but I didn't want to just be a black screen.
It's funny when you're at a very small meeting and. You know, everybody's got their screen on black. It's like, what the heck?
I agree. I experienced that. Well, I guess I'll leave it on for now, too. I was worried I'd be too whitewashed. With the light in my room.
Comes John Airstuck. He's a member of the ZBA and he's out on the West Coast.
Oh, okay. Um, is it comfortable for you if I leave the video on?
Fine.
Oh, thanks. Okay.
Morning, John.
Good morning. How are you doing?
Good. What's that mind you a mirror or?
Oh, you know, that is kind of weird, isn't it? I'm in a.
Oh, there you go.
Breakfast. Yeah, if I just kind of sit in the right place, I'll block that. Mirror over the bureau. Operation here today. Oh.
I just talked to Jeff a minute ago. He's about to sign on, so that's good.
Okay. Nothing can go bad today for me. I'm as of yesterday, I have. The third of my three daughters all happily married. So. So I'm on top of the world.
That's the goal, right?
And there's Tom. Hi, Tom.
Good morning, John. How are you?
I am.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much. How are things back on the home front? I've been out of touch with. With Chutesbury and. The general area recently.
Awesome.
And hot and humid and you know, we had four and a half inches of rain the other day.
I I've been following it a little bit on, yeah, on the weather reports. It's like it sounds a little bit wretched. Too much of a good thing, right?
Well, it's hot and then, you know, you can't have the windows open because the rain is just every time I open the windows. I'd look at the map. Okay, doesn't look like it's gonna rain. Oh, my God, it's raining.
Yeah, I hear it to that where it's hot as hell. Uh, but it's that dry heat is just a whole different kind of a phenomenon, so. You can deal with it a lot, a lot more easily, you know, than with that high humidity. Boy, makes all the difference. For the wedding yesterday, it happened at four o'clock, which was, you know, the highest temperature of the day. And it was, uh, it was a hundred.
Oh, my word.
Yeah, you know, so. Yeah, but as the evening settled in. And Mount Hood's in the background. It's like, man. It was ideal, just.
You, uh, Portland?
Uh, we're a little bit east of Portland. We're in a place called Hood River.
Okay.
So Mount Hood is like. Mumbia Gorge, yeah. Yeah.
I was once out in Walla Walla, Washington. I have a similar. Find it is so hot that it was tolerable.
Exactly. Yeah, makes makes a big difference. And there comes Mr. Lacy. Are we expecting someone from Jim Hawkins' office as well, or is, yeah, okay?
Jim's on vacation, but he was gonna send his. Uh, alternate building inspector, uh, I think Jeff Gutten. I have met him.
Yeah. Is he? Is he? He's not a Chutesbury resident, though, is he?
No.
Yeah.
I.
There, speaking of the devil.
Not sure if the homeowners will come or not. I thought they might.
Morning, Jeff.
Hey there, everybody. Tom? John, John?
Yep. Morning, John.
John with an H. John, hold the H.
Hold the H. Ever had one, never will.
It should be really nice if we could kind of differentiate that when we say them, you know, so we know which one we're talking about, but. Doesn't work that way.
John versus.
John.
Well, you can call me Johann if you want, I suppose.
John Man. I've called you lots of things over the years.
Oh, I believe me, I know. And I deserved every one of them.
John boy, yeah.
I guess I can start the meeting. In fact, we've got a. Few other pieces of unanticipated business. Why didn't I open the meeting? Meeting is open at eleven. Oh, five.
That depends.
Jeff Lacy is. Gonna take the minutes for us.
Got it.
Thanks, Jeff.
Here's the building inspector coming in now. Hi, Jeff. Can you hear us? So I'll, um, I'll say something about the situation that we're in, which is, um, at. Uh, we're here initially to talk about seventeen Leverett Road where. Um, an addition has been added on to a pre-existing, non-conforming. Single-family home. The addition is pretty good sized and. I saw it going up, um, you know, watched as they poured the foundation, but I was not a member of the ZBA and. Didn't feel like it was. My problem, so I I never said anything about it, but now here I am on the ZBA and a question was asked of me what that was. So I did a little research and found that, um. A building permit, um, was issued, um, for the addition from Franklin County. Regional Inspection Services, um, apparently issued in error because. This never came to the zoning board of appeals for a site plan review, uh, which it which it would have, um, should have. So. That's sort of a. Highlight of where we're at. I guess what I want to get done at this meeting is try to divide, define a process that we can enter. To go forward and decide how to get a site plan review for this thing and then. A bigger question, um, and maybe for another meeting. Uh, with Jim Hawkins present is to determine an ongoing process. Between the ZBA and FERCOG so that we don't. Let's say we prevent this from happening again. How about that? I was.
Yeah, our zoning has been. I guess described by. By Jim, Jim Hawkins in the past as being. A, a, a bit complex and somewhat unusual in number of areas. But to me, that should just tell them that when. Uh, Chutesbury building permit is applied for, you need to really check it. Because it's. There's lots of ins and outs. Um, or at least, um. Call somebody on the planning or zoning board. So anyway. Chutesbury should be a red flag that. You'd be careful, you'd check.
That that said, has has this happened before in and in in recent, oh, it has recently happened?
Yeah.
Yep. And. You know, building inspectors have a lot, especially. Ones like FERCOG where they're dealing with multiple towns. The building code is pretty standard. Across the state, but the zoning is different from every, from town to town. Um, if you were just Chutesbury's building inspector. Which I wish John was. Um. He he just know the zoning for the for the town, and that's all he worried about. But these guys have, I don't know, fourteen towns or something.
Seventeen towns.
Yeah. So things like this are gonna happen. But. I mean, I think the building inspector. So office should just recognize the oversight. And, um. Stop the project until, um. Site plan review has been completed.
Yeah, so I have. I have a little note to myself here that I'm not. Code enforcement. Um, in this meeting and. And I have to keep reminding myself of that because I did that for twelve years for a neighboring community. Yeah, I. I mean, there are, there are some, um. I. I, you know, I've not seen a. A, um. Plot plan for this project, so I I don't know, you know, whether one was submitted. What I've seen online is. In the application for the building permit, um. You know, floor plans and elevations, um, but. And a, and even, um, another permit for solar. On the site, but I've. I don't know, you know, what setbacks are. Um, I I went to the assessor's. Um, GIS system and, you know, pulled a measurement from the. Front. Property line to the house currently, and it's. Looks like it's, uh. Fourteen feet.
Fourteen feet setback, no.
Is that from the road?
No, 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 that's from the property line.
Built in the same location as an existing garage.
Oh, hi, Jeff.
Standing of the the project. So it's not a new setback dimension. It's where the building already was. Well, now it starts getting a little complicated because. The town center has a twenty-foot. Front setback. And. Yet our zoning says for accessory apartments. The. The apartment needs to, um. All right, says the principal one family dwelling, including the accessory apartment, must satisfy all. Side and rear. Setback requirements. It conspicuously leaves out the front. And I think we did that just knowing how many houses were so close to the road. And. You know, not making them go through, uh. Um, some kind of dimensional variance process every time. So we just left out the front. So. It's the side in the rear that. That are are really applicable here, I believe.
So that sounds like it might be a non-issue for us. The only other thing that I spotted in my. Um, quick research on this on the. From the assessor's map. And from our dimensional table is the, um. Frontage, um. Required. If that doesn't seem to vary in the town center district, it's two hundred and fifty feet. Am I right about that?
Frontage is also left out. Uh, it says the lot must have an area of forty-five thousand square feet. So that's in it. That's a little over an acre. Um, but it says nothing about frontage.
Okay. So the. The fact that there's already something there on a non-conforming lot that that, um. It's a free, that's a free spin, I guess.
And we do have do have an acre worth of land here?
Um, I don't have that. Card up in front of me. I think.
I think.
Yeah, it goes way back.
Right. So they probably do. And again, the reason we wrote this in two thousand and eight was because so many. Of the houses were built without two hundred and fifty feet of frontage.
Sure.
The former frontage used to be one fifty, and then it was maybe something less or nothing. And we didn't want to make. So so many houses are like that. We didn't want to put them through the wringer. Uh, for frontage. We we just felt the side and the rear were important setbacks, but that was.
Makes sense.
I didn't check any of that, but, um. I'm not sure, um, Jeff Gutten, do you know, was a was a site plan, um, part of the application process here? Did they? Is there one in the, um, electronic file?
There is not one. No, it should have had.
Oh, yeah, that was an oversight as well, I guess.
Yeah, um. Because it was being built on the same footprint as there was, so no site plan was submitted for it.
Okay.
Okay, but that doesn't obviate the need for a site plan review.
Going forward, that's our conversation about going forward.
Yeah, there's one, one more thing, you know, as we're talking about actual dimensions and so forth. What what are we talking about in terms of height? Are there any issues there? With the, um.
I don't think zoning doesn't address, like, um, and it would be a, um, building code thing. I, it doesn't, it doesn't look like it's more than thirty-two feet high. Can you verify that? Jeff Gutten?
Um, yeah, it doesn't look to be over any elevation. Or height requirement.
I mean, their, um, their second floor is actually, you know, got some roof pitch involved in it, so, um, they haven't gone up two full floors on a. And a roof on top of that there, that that space upstairs looks like it's. You know.
Yeah, there it's not. The. Clearest set of plans I've seen.
Got that too. I was a little, um. A little perplexed that it seems like the homeowner is in the business. Am I right about that?
Uh, it looks to be. I'm not actually the one that did the plan review on this.
Okay.
Um, I ended up issuing my name's on the permit. I issued it because. It was in our system is ready to issue.
I got you.
Did not do the plan review. Um, I. Agreed there should have. Been more questions, questions on this. Um. I don't know if Jim has gone out and put a stop work order this. I think he may have. Um, but we can. Pause, get them to stop the project while we do the site plan. Well, you guys do the site plan review.
Okay. I mean, I. I hate to do that to someone because I've I've, um, been the recipient of that process, but. I. I, you know, I think that's probably the cleanest way forward here.
Now, I would say there was definitely an oversight on our part. And. Having them pause for a bit, will you? Do the site plan review would be good. It looks like they will meet most requirements, like the setbacks. Just because it was a pre-existing location.
Sure.
I don't know about, uh, what. I know there are a couple of decks on that. I don't know that any of them are encroaching more than they used to. I would have to.
Well, will you, um? Uh, I guess do us the favor of finding out where Jim is at with this. I think that he. He alluded to it. A message that he sent to the homeowner, but I, he didn't tell me what he sent, and he didn't copy me on anything, um. So I don't know, you know, where he's left them in terms of, uh. Stopping work or how to go forward. He he wanted to know if it was okay if he gave her my cell phone number so she could call me about the process, but.
Um. I, well. He gave me the direction that we can rescind, um, the permit for now. So you guys can perform. What should have clearly been done already, and. We go from there.
Okay. Thanks, Jeff. Um.
I will contact them and explain that to them. What we're doing and why we're doing it.
Okay, great. Um, any, any other, uh, questions from members of the board?
Uh, well, just a, just a note. Um. I've been following the housing bond bill in the legislature. Um, because there's something in there we actually wrote for Chutesbury regarding accessory. Uh, members of ZBAs and planning boards, actually just planning boards, but. While reading through it. Hundred and seventy-seven pages. I found that they they haven't, uh. They've inserted a definition of accessory apartments. And also a new sort of. Exemption for accessory apartments. This, I believe, is solidly in the housing bond bill and will pass. Uh, quite shortly. Um. By the end of the month. So I sent it to John and John. Um. For your information over email this morning, but. If this passes, this controls. To the extent that it conflicts with our local. Chutesbury zoning bylaw, I mean. One conflict here is that, um. You know, we have an eight hundred foot limit. The limit in here is half. It's either half the gross area of the principal dwelling or nine hundred square feet, whichever is smaller. So. That that could effectively. Increase our eight hundred feet to nine hundred feet. And then it also says you can't require occupancy by an owner of one of the units. So that's in our bylaw, so we can't do that anymore. So we. As we do this, we have to bear in mind this legislation and make sure we don't. Run afoul of it because I'm positive it's gonna pass.
Is all is all, um, legislation retroactive now as we saw with the Supreme Court recently?
You know, if if we're right in the middle of. Yeah, I mean, with the Supreme Court, they were right in the middle of sentencing and, um. Too bad they didn't sentence earlier, um. But anyway, um. Yeah, if you're in the middle of a process and a law changes, um. You have to, you have to, you have to adjust with it.
Okay.
At the moment, I believe. I don't think there's any grace period.
So, yeah, I mean. Maybe the home ownership. Piece affects us. We we don't know about that. I mean, I think they, the homeowners live, live there now, and, you know, we don't know what their future plans are, but. Um, the the piece that might have some effect is about the size of the. Um. The unit. I don't. I think it looked like it. Already was less than eight hundred feet. Do you know that, Jeff Gutten?
I did quick math on that just before the meeting. And I came up, including the mudroom area. Of eight hundred and forty. Square feet to the outside. In this year, the bylaws say eight hundred. Square feet of floor area. So I would argue that it's. Right on the edge, if not within.
Yeah, okay.
Once you get rid of exterior walls and partitions and such. Yeah. Yeah, they, um. Let's see. For for area. They talk about heated, I believe. Um.
In the new, in the new bylaw, in the new state, um. Housing bill?
Yeah, um. Yeah, so I didn't include decks or anything that was just, uh. Making the square is the. I didn't include second floor, so they may be over it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Yeah, but but that's why we have site plan reviews. We can.
Hopefully you catch that stuff then, right?
Assess the project against the standards and. You know, there are a few other, um. Things in there that are a little bit soft and fuzzy, like it's architecturally compatible with the principal structure and this and that, and, uh, you can require an extra parking place. Um. Does that currently have, uh, three? Three spaces? That lot? I don't know what it has, um.
Yeah, it's hard to tell because it's, um, you know, it's still under construction, so the it's not landscaped in the front or anything, and and construction vehicles come and go and park. Wherever they, you know, have direct access to the front door, so.
There's no long. Yeah. Account. But anyway. This is what we do during our site plan review, so we don't have to sweat every little detail now and.
Yeah, that's right. So anyway, this will be coming forward. That sounds great, um, Jeff Gutten. Thank you. If there aren't any other questions, I think we can. Let you off the hook here and we'll go on to some unanticipated business.
So the so the FERCOG folks will. Will rescind or suspend this permit and then instruct the applicant to come to us for site plan review?
That's right.
Yes. Okay. Yes. Thank you very much. I will do. All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, what else you got on our agenda here? Um, Carrie did provide an agenda to me. ZBA vacancy discussion. I talked to Nathan Murphy about that for a few minutes about possibly getting someone from the, um. Current planning board to come over, much the way you had previously, Jeff, member of two boards, um. So we don't meet that often. It's not. That heavy a lift. Um, he thought that there might be some interest. Uh, so that's to be continued.
Did. Did you give any further thought to contacting Tom Williams?
No.
Um. How would you feel about that? I mean.
He's a, he's a hundred percent retired, and I don't, I don't know why he would. You know, he's already. Come out of retirement and served on the ZBA once, um, when Chuck was still chair. I think if I myself was retired and moved away from Chutesbury. How would I? Receive that? No, I wouldn't. There's no way.
That that describes me, and I'm I'm sitting here on your screen right now, right?
Appreciate that. That's because you feel you feel so bad for.
Where where does moved away mean for for Williams?
I mean, he lives down on the Cape.
Ah, okay.
He comes back. I see him at the AC every now and then, um.
See him downtown sometimes.
I I think he has continuing affinity for Chutesbury and. N- nobody was, uh, he was just such a great member. He he knew our zoning inside and out. Um, he was great at meetings, very authoritative. Um. When I first.
So even keeled, you know, I mean. And I'd be like, absolutely not. And he would, he would find a way, you know?
He was the chair of the planning board when it approved the old Peach Orchard subdivision.
Yeah, I was, I was the clerk of the planning board when that, when. Yep.
Yeah. I don't know him at all. How 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 old a guy is he?
Oh, he's. Mid-eighties, I think.
Okay, okay.
That old, really?
I don't think so.
Well. I don't know, John, if 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 I could reel him in, would you mind?
I mean, you can have a conversation with him. That's fine.
Let let me see what I can do. It's always fun to talk to them anyway.
All right. All right, um. Unanticipated business. I have three things here. One of them is Six Kinder Lane, so that's down off of. Old Egypt Road, um, by the lake across from the beach. Um, it's a home that was previously Howard Kinder's. House. It is now owned by. A woman named Edith Hunzberger. She sent an email to the planning board, which the planning board forwarded on to Carrie, which Carrie forwarded on to me. Um, she wanted to know about possibility for making the, um. Looks like pre-existing apartment. looks like pre-existing apartment in the basement, um, a legal accessory apartment. And, I did a quick review of the um, assessor's information on that and, you know, snapped a few dimensions. She has a, um, undersized lot. Let's see, it's fifteen thousand square feet, um, from my memory, so it would need to be, you know, forty thousand square feet. She's, she doesn't have that and she, also doesn't have any of the setbacks, um, side or rear, so um, I sent her an email and I said, I, don't think this is likely something that um, the, the ZBA would approve, and I haven't heard back from her. The second, yeah.
That, that email should, somewhere go into our, our records of, what we've done. You know, e- even if it was just a, I don't know, it was, wasn't an official action of the ZBA. It was, education and guidance.
Yep.
Kind of thing, but you should probably hang on to that just for, for the record in case, say she goes ahead and does it anyway, or does it illegally, then.
I mean, it's already done. As far as I know, I look like it.
Oh, you think it's already in there?
Oh, yeah. I think Howard did it.
Ah. Does there, does there need official action taken today? Is that, is that an option?
No. I am not the code enforcement officer. That is what my little note says. Uh, so, you know, I don't know. I just, she asked a specific question and I answered that question. Uh, didn't get any deeper than that. Um, yes, I agree that that should be stored somewhere and I, I, talked to Carrie before she left about our records, you know, everything's in paper still. The town hasn't digitized and, anything. They haven't explored any grants for digitizing anything. It's just, they stay in that drawer until the drawer is full and then they go over to the old town hall and molder and um, yeah, electronic, communications, those are all, you know, part of our records and uh, there's not really a system that's been addressed for how we hold on to those. I have them organized in folders, on my laptop, but you know, uh, that's where they are. The town, I, as far as I know, doesn't have any sort of electronic storage for anything. The second case is um, now that we spotted this thing on Leverett Road, Jim has, deluged me with a couple of other things, because he realizes, oh wow, they have, got their eyes open. One is that fifty-nine Shore Drive. Um, it's, there's an existing cottage on this property, which they're proposing to tear down and they have um, applied for a building permit. I'm not sure if Jim has denied this permit or not, but, uh, the plans are available on the FERCog website. I looked at them. Kuhn Riddle designed a great big house to go on this little, you know, sort of postage stamp piece of property. I'm not sure about the setbacks. Um, it's twenty-five feet from the lake, which I see is, is, well, you know, one of the, items that we're looking at, but, they have a hundred feet of frontage, but what, from what you said, Jeff, it doesn't matter what the frontage is. We don't look at that.
Well, wait a minute. Now, this is a different um,
Different property.
This, well, it's a different case too, because it's not accessory apartments.
It's just, tear down a, tear down a cottage and replace it with a year-round residence.
Right, so, frontage, lot size, setbacks, all matter.
Uh, doesn't, they can't do it then. The answer is no.
Well, they, they might be able to do it, but it could require a special permit from us, not just a building permit.
Right, so maybe that's, he, he's not good about, you know, hitting reply all or sharing with anyone else when he communicates. So I don't, I don't know what's transpired between him and the owners of this place. I guess that's part of the conversation about how can we work together?
Well, i- in our, in our zoning bylaw,
Yeah, we have pictures.
There's all these scenarios that we have to go through.
Okay.
You know, is it gonna be higher? Is it gonna be closer to the side? Does it, you know, all this stuff? And,
Oh, it's way higher. It's a two, it's a two-story house.
Right, but is it gonna be higher than, than it was?
Oh, yeah, yeah. No, what it is now is like literally a flat-roofed cottage. It looks like an ice cream stand, you know?
Right, so, so what, what Hawkins office has to do is go through himself, go through these scenarios. Well, he can flip it to us if he doesn't know, but he should go through these scenarios. And the result is either um, by right or by special permit.
I gotcha.
By right, he can issue a building permit. Special permit, it has to come through us first.
Great.
All right, if you just remind notes, what, what's the uh, the address that we're talking about here?
Fifty-nine Shore Drive. So you can um, you can go to the assessor's page and you can, go to their mapping system and you can pull this thing up. And there's a couple of pictures of what the cottage is now. And you can see the dimensions of the lot. That's, that's the sort of research that I do on these.
Mm-hmm.
By right?
Um,
special permit. Okay. Want to move on to the third one?
Yeah, I mean, commonly, so, you know, what Hawkins would do in a lot of these cases is he'd say, you need to check in with the ZBA. So then, the, the applicant would come before us for education and guidance. So we, we'd do the review, just, an entry level review to determine whether they could go for a building permit or whether they had to come to us. We do that at the meeting under that education and guidance. And,
Yeah, because it seems like it's sort of late in the process here. You know, these people have applied for a building permit and, it's already in the queue, you know? And from what Jeff Gooden was saying, it might not get eyes at all, you know? It sounds like someone else's reviewing these things and, and, you know, putting up, putting them in a, in a queue for review, for um, issuance, so. All right, five eighty-five Wendell Road. There's a little um, I don't know, kind of a uh, looks like nineteen seventies, shack on this property. I guess it's a, you know, a little sort of um, you know, the book Handmade Houses, a Woodstock from the seventies. It looks like, it looks like one of those, you know, looks like a little, thing that a, you know, maybe somebody with some carpentry skills, um, put up. The guys, asked for a building permit to put a great big addition on it and Jim shot them down and said, no, you know, it looks like an accessory apartment. You need, you need to go before the zoning board of appeals, so um, he has already sent um, an email to Carrie saying, hey, is there any way to appeal this guy's decision that, you know, this is an accessory apartment? It's not an accessory apartment. It's just a great big addition. Um, so, I don't know whether to, sort of get, at what level do I get involved in this or at what point?
Well, um, remember that we are the zoning board of appeals. So if the owner didn't like the building inspector's, determination, they appeal it to,
Yep.
Us.
He appeals it, but there's an appeal process, right? So he, he needs to go through that.
Yes. And we've, in my tenure on the ZBA, we've only done one of these.
Okay.
And we overturned the building inspector.
Yep.
So, yeah, I mean, the applicant could do something like that if they want to go through that whole process with the hearing and everything else. Or um, they could just apply to us directly.
Right. Okay, I'll um, communicate with the owner by email then. Anything else? Oh, Tom's got his hand up.
Hi. Is it okay if I speak now or?
Yeah.
Oh, thanks a lot. Okay, um, two unrelated questions. One, I didn't know I had until this meeting just happened now, because it was in your unanticipated business, but, can you just confirm for me who is on the ZBA at the moment? It's a little confusing from online and whatnot. Please.
Webpage just never gets updated, I know. So I am a, a full member and um, am acting as the chair. Uh, John Airstuck is a full member appointed by the board, you know, select board. And Jeff is an alternate member, um, and, you know, coming in if we need him, which obviously, we, we don't, it, it takes three people to, to, um, and we need a unanimous decision on anything that we vote on and it takes three people to do that, so.
Okay, thanks. Um, and so you're looking for another full member? Another, I mean, is there also room for another alternate member?
I mean, there's also room for another alternate.
I thought there might be two alternates and three regulars. Is that?
Right, so that way, somebody can't, or if somebody has a, you know, conflict of interest or whatever, you know, you have a sort of a pool you can draw from.
Yeah, e- exactly, exactly. Yeah, I'm an associate member in the planning board, so I understand.
Okay, yep.
Um, thank you. That's just been a little bit confusing and y'all don't need very much, so this was an opportunity to ask, uh, directly. Uh, the other thing is, uh, I don't know if it's relevant or if you're aware that a fifty-nine Shore Drive has been actively in front of the Conservation Commission for about it, I don't know, six months or a year, and I believe it's already demolished. Um, but uh, I just didn't know if it was relevant or if you wanted to, know more, if you walked by.
There's not a lot of um, you know, in, in Amherst, when I worked there, all of those departments are in, they're located in the same place in town hall, so you, you, you know, and we used to meet and talk about what about this property and what about that property and who's, oh yeah, we're, we're working on that property. That's not happening here in Schutzbury, you know? I wondered about this place. It's seventeen Leverett Road. Did they, did the Board of Health review the septic on that?
I see.
Adding a couple of bedrooms, um.
We're not supposed to issue a site plan review on an accessory apartment till after the Board of Health has, has reviewed and determined that, that there's enough uh, land area there for a well and a septic system.
Sure, sure. Um,
And actually, the, the septic, when you add bedrooms, you know, you, you need to have an engineer say that the septic system you have is adequate and um, I don't know whether that's, so.
Well, I, I just, I don't know, I guess, because I follow a lot of different boards. I, when that address was said, I was like, wait, and I, I just look now at the Concom and it's about a year. The last, thing was in June of twenty-four that that property came up with the Concom, so.
Okay, thank you.
Anyhow.
I, relative to fifty-nine Shore Drive, I believe, this has been before us, before, for something or other. And I think I may have files on it, in my ZBA collection of stuff. I'm gonna go back and look. And uh, I, I think they approached at one point, and maybe one of us went out and looked or something. I, I, I think it came before us maybe for education and guidance at one point a few years ago. So I'll look at my files.
Thank you.
And uh, see what's there.
Would you also be willing to, put the stuff that's on your, hard drive on a thumb drive and, and get that to me at some point? That, that'd be helpful.
Okay, um, yeah. Yeah, files. To JCT, okay, you got it.
When you do a um, you know, a, a special permit or uh, th- those, those forms that we use there, it looks like it's the same form every time. Is that, do you have an electronic copy of that? How are you filling that out?
Um, oh, when I write the permit? Oh, I have a, I have a template.
You do, okay. That'd be helpful to have as well, so I don't have to recreate that. I asked Carrie about it and she didn't think there was one.
Yeah, and um, John, one thing that, I'm willing to do for you guys, because I've been doing it for, for years, is I can write your permits if you'd like.
Yeah.
Um, you know, once, even if I haven't been part of the decision-making process, I don't think there's anything that's stopping me from actually writing the permit.
Okay.
Um, it just, the, the chair shouldn't have to write the permits too. I mean, you have enough to do.
This is a lot like a full-time job for me and I'm, but I don't get paid now. Yeah, okay, that's great, um. We, I guess the last piece of unanticipated business that I can share with you is I sat in on an interview for um, a fellow who applied for Carrie's position, um, last week, with um, Nathan Murphy from the planning board and Beth Wilson from the Concom and, nice enough guy, um, he's a, um, a reporter and a writer. He's a published author. Um, no real experience on any of these kind of boards. So, you know, it, there'd be, there'd be quite a um, ramp-up period for him to come up to speak, but, I think they're gonna offer him the job. I mean, we didn't, any of us have any, reason not to offer it to him. And since we don't have any other applicants, um, you know, sure, go ahead.
You know, this is getting to be, you know, Linda Ava Scott, of course, was the gold standard, in all this. And, and then we've, we've sort of, it, it's been hard to retain these folks and, um, I, I recently was consulting to Charlemont.
Yes.
Over there, um, they have a, what person called Secretary to the Boards. And she does, I think, everything that Carrie did, plus the select board.
Wow, but it's a full-time job.
It, it's more of a job. It's like something that someone could actually stick with and, and uh, make a decent amount of money.
Right.
And I think what we've done with the land use clerk is just make it not enough of a job to hold on to anybody for very long.
Right.
So, I, I don't know if, if Town Hall would ever, listen to any of that, but I think if they made it one good job for somebody, it'd hang out for longer.
Well, I can tell you that sort of the history of Linda, what is this? She was, doing that job for the Conservation Commission and I was, on a member of the ZBA and clerking for the ZBA and, um, it, got to be too much for me because I was, you know, I took this job in Amherst, so now I, I wasn't self-employed. I couldn't sort of make time, you know, in, anywhere in the day to do this stuff. And, I said to Chuck, you know, why don't we get Linda? She already knows how to do a lot of this stuff. And so that was the sort of trigger. And then, oh yeah, you know, we should get Linda. And then the planning board, you know, got her too. I mean, it, it's, it's uh, it's very difficult to be a member on one of these volunteer boards and also have, you know, and a, a position as, as an administrator, um.
Yeah.
You can't really listen to the case and make a informed decision when you're trying to keep the minutes straight, you know?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so I don't know, John, you know, you might want to, keep that idea in mind, you know, the, a, a um, clerk to the boards.
Right.
Uh, and, and include that select board, because they have, they have one of their own now. It's uh,
That's right.
Which was Linda's last job before she moved away.
Yeah.
Um, but somehow in Charlemont, they make it all work with one person.
That's pretty cool. That's pretty cool. I mean, they maybe have less, you know, before them, um. I think in Schutzbury, that, that, was, we talked to this applicant about the Concom's, you know, a pretty big commitment. There's, there's a lot of little, permits that happen because, you know, the stuff at the lake, um, you know, that's, everything down there needs a, a hard look, so. Um, they figured that sixty percent of his time would be spent on Conservation Commission stuff and, you know, uh, planning board, once a month. And then when a big case comes in, you know, one of these um, solar cases or something, that, that becomes a much bigger job and then, and then us, you know, we just happen when we happen and sometimes there's nothing and sometimes there's three or four things at once and.
Yeah. Well, whatever they do, I, I hope they can, I mean, I mean, this guy from Wendell, sounds like he's got so many things going that uh,
Always from Warwick.
Warwick, okay.
He, he's, so the, the newspaper that he was writing for, I think, is called The Reminder, I guess. Um, they're like going out of business, so. they're like going out of business, so, you know, his, his job sort of went away and, um, he's, he's thinking, he's approaching this as something that he might do for five years and, you know, at that point, we have to.
I, I'd be happy if somebody'd hang out for five years.
That's what we said.
It'd be great. Sign you up.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you, uh, all for, uh, being available for this.
All right, well, it's good seeing you guys and, uh, you know, if you're in the neighborhood, you can attend a Conway Planning Board meeting sometime.
Ooh, fun. I'll, I'll close the meeting at eleven.
Can I, John, can I just insert one thing before you do that? Do, do, given that we are looking at at least the seventeen Leverett Road, uh, property for a, um, you know, for some kind of authorization, do, do we need to set a meeting date and, and another time for the, for, for getting together on that or?
Not yet, I mean, I think they need to, uh, submit an application.
We wait for that to happen, okay, okay, yeah, yeah.
So we'll close the meeting at eleven forty-nine.
Thank you.
Hey, great to see you all again.
Thank you, you too, guys.
Take care.
I'm in town soon.
All right, see ya.
Bye-bye.